Good evening. Welcome to School Committee, July, or excuse me, June 22nd, 2015, 7:30 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. First order of business, questions and comments? None. Do we have any questions or comments from the audience? No? Superintendent's report.
Yes, just a couple of things because a number of the things that I might mention will be in the presentation a bit later in the evening. We are going to talk later, when everyone is here, about the Grand Cooture thing, so that will be under the 48-hour. Staffing update, I believe that I've met with 10 new staff members to date. I think three of them are mentioned in your packet. I have another seven scheduled for this week and next week. And then at that point, I believe, we'll have 10 or 12 ongoing openings to fill. And some of those, of course, are new kindergarten staff openings. But we're making very good progress, and as I always am at this time of year, very excited about the new folks that we're bringing aboard. Reserve fund transfers. Last week, the selectmen met. Eliza was at that meeting, and they unanimously approved the transfers that are moved $244,000 from the reserve into our end-of-the-year account. And that, of course, was all for the snow removal costs that we had submitted. This Thursday, I believe, Mr. Piles, is your meeting as well, at 8:00? Is that correct, or thereabouts?
Yeah, we're starting at 7:30.
Okay. And so that process has moved along well. Certainly appreciative of getting that funding. I did put in your packet a copy of the summary of the dollars that have been expended from the current year's FY15 budget that had to do with snow removal. You remember me saying earlier on, there were really three kind of pots, if you will, of dollars. One are dollars that came out of our FY15 operating budget. Those are summarized here, and the total is about $98,000. That covered overtime for our staff. Obviously, they work during the day moving snow and so on as well. But overtime hours that were required to do that reflects the relatively small insurance deductibles that are for some of the projects that we're working on for repair. And then some sundry supplies for the repairs themselves. So that was nearly $100,000 that would have been money, had we not needed to expend it that way, would have dropped to the bottom line and likely been unexpended dollars at the end of the year. One of the reasons that I've read it is as tight as it is. But it's tight, and we think it's going to be in the black as well, so that's a good thing. But I thought you would appreciate seeing those costs. And if you turn over on the other side, there are two sides for this. You can see also reflected there the $114,000 insurance money that has already been received. And obviously, more dollars will be coming as the other projects are completed. And if they're in excess of 114, they will need to be appropriated next year at the town meeting. So that's it, I think. A number of the other things I would comment on, I can do in the context of the presentation.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Gallo from the school committee? Audience? Communications?
I receive no.
Do we have a student here today? No. He's out of school.
I think he was out with his last exam today, probably about 11 o'clock.
Right. So, new business, 5.1, "To Consider Rate Changes for Hourly and Per-DM Workers, Non-Collective Bargaining Employees for 2015-16 as Proposed by the School Department and Recommended by the Salary Negotiation Subcommittee." Carol?
You have in your packet, I am 5.1, which John set out the various categories and the history on what the hourly rates were. We reviewed this at our meeting. Dot, on the student help technology, did we decide that was only 1340?
Yes, that figure is for this year, at least, the 1340. In discussing this with John, we think using that wording, leaving that wording of highest student rate in is a good idea because those rates can change from one year to the next, and that will always assure that the intended higher rate for those students is there.
That was just one question that came up among the three of us. And so that highest student rate is 1340 for this year. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions.
Do we have anyone who want to make a motion?
I will make a motion. There are no questions. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the hourly rates as set out on the, for proposed, or hourly rates for fiscal year 2016 as contained on the proposed document number 5.1 in our packet.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you very much, Carol.
Secondly, we also voted at our committee to authorize the superintendent, with the awareness and approval of the chair, Salary Negotiation Chair, to establish 2015-2016 salaries for individuals and non-collective bargaining units during the summer months, provided they are within budget and reflect the parameters established by the already approved collective bargaining agreements. This is something that has happened every summer. It helps to cover people such as payroll or accounting staff that may come or go. In the past, it included the Food Services Director, and certainly would cover the new facilities role for the upcoming year.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? The others will go into a motion.
That's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. So that was item 5.2. Item 5.3, Carol, it's still with you.
Okay. Well, my understanding is we're not going to vote on this. So this is just to receive language. We had several different paragraphs that we were receiving language on. We did, just for your edification, we did agree on the proposed section, new section 22, which we will vote on at our next meeting. But we did not come to any agreement at this time on 23 and 24. We're actually going to go back and look at that and discuss it further. I know we're not picking it up tonight, so that's just status of where we're at.
Does anybody have any questions for Carol? Any other comments? Dr. Gallo, do you have any notes on that?
Yeah.
Good. Moving along to 5.4, "To Hear Preliminary Assessment as Identified by the Superintendent of Current and Anticipated Facility Program and Staffing Needs That Will Require School Committee Deliberation and Planning."
Just have a brief PowerPoint. You have a lot of words that go with it, so don't be, don't be based upon the language. So, the first thing I would point out is some words. This is very first slide, and the word preliminary, because we are just beginning, not even in yet, but beginning thinking about the FY16 year and also the FY17 year in terms of budget. So it's a preliminary assessment of where we are. It's from my perspective. Yes, I have shared it with the chair and the vice chair, the ideas, and I have shared the PowerPoint with my peers here at central office. But, you know, if you ask any members of our staff, whether they be other administrators or other teachers, they might also have some other ideas. And perhaps some of you, as we move forward with this planning, will have ideas as well. And it is summer 2015. It's a long way to go, when you know in our business, things can change on a, almost daily, well, they do change, on a daily basis. So there may be things of an emergency nature that kind of get added to this list to begin thinking about. There may be some things that will come off it. We can only hope that that would be the case. But this is preliminary. It's a snapshot in time, and it's my perspective. And the whole notion here is that we're going to have a planning meeting in September. That meeting is a half-day, and we all, I believe, that think that it's time well-spent. However, you can't get everything done in a half-day. And certainly, in the absence of knowing the background for some of the items that will appear here, and knowing the context in which these items will appear, is something that we certainly can't get done in that morning. So the hope here is to give you some background and context, get you thinking about these things, and so, and perhaps add or detract from that list over the summer time, so that when we get to the planning meeting, we'll have some good information on which to make some judgments. Planning both in terms of goals and projects, and also planning with respect to thinking about, initially about, the FY17 budget. Also, we're going to have some subcommittee meetings over the summer, and this may provide some good background and context for that as well. So, there are a number of challenges, as there always are, in areas of need. And I've divided these into four categories. Could have divided them up differently. There's some overlap in the categories, so there are a couple of things that could have gone in more than one category. But they all are here in one category. So here are the four areas of challenge, facilities. And that includes long-term planning. Long-term meaning something that isn't going to get done in FY15, and may not even be part of our planning and budget for FY17. But things that we should be thinking about, things that really have to be on our plate for consideration, and that we'll decide about later in terms of where in the timeline of, in the life of the school committee, but also the timeline in the life of the town and its project, do some of these things fit. And then there's a category that is called programs. That means learning programs has to do with curriculum, and with assessment, and with technology as a tool of learning. And there's a category called student support needs. And, you know, you might likely think, well, that must be all about special education. And I can tell you that certainly special education would be in there, but it's about lots more than that as well. And finally, in that category, personnel and staffing. We were challenged in last year to come up with some thoughts about, you know, just how many more personnel do we need? What categories of staffing might still be on the horizon of need for us, in addition to enrollment-related staffing? And we had, I had a goal about looking at personnel, particularly the non-enrollment-related staffing. And so that sort of thing fits into this category, as well as some other things. So, I think one of the things we sometimes forget about is we're looking forward to planning, and looking forward to setting goals, and looking forward to developing a budget. We kind of forget sometimes about asking these questions, and they're really important ones. When we come to the planning meeting, I think it's natural for all of us to come with a list of things. These are the things I would like to see. And, you know, lists are fine as starting points, but we really need to think about the criteria as we look forward with what we would put in a plan, what we would ask for in a budget, and so on. So these are the three big questions, I think, for us, and they are, what must we do? Obviously, there are some mandates, and they may be state mandates, such as park and MCAS, or they may be common core and state benchmarks. But they may also be kind of local requirements, whether it is local in the sense of a building code, or simply local in the sense of having adequate health staff in our buildings. So those things are under the must-dos, and probably would rise to the top as we would categorize any of our plans or funding requests. Next, what do we need and want to do? Because certainly, there are district goals. I have goals, you individually have goals. Together, you'll come up with some areas to focus on when we get to the planning meeting. There are school committee priorities, and sometimes they're different from one person to the next, and sometimes there's good consensus on them. There were new initiatives that are desired and needed in our district, desired by the administrators and others that contribute ideas for our consideration. And there's always our want and need to fulfill our mission. So that's a whole category of things that are things that we need and want. And when I say want, I certainly would not want to imply a wish list here, but things that we really want to make education better for the kids that we serve every day. Now, last question, I think we don't ask often enough, and sometimes we don't even ask it at all. And I wish our legislature actually would ask that question more often. And that is, what do we have capacity to do? What can we do? What must we do? What do we need and want to do? And what can we do? And capacity can be measured in a variety of ways. Certainly, it has to do with time and energy. There are only so many projects we can get done in any given year. So that's a time and energy thing. Do we have the right personnel? We're adding a person this year that we think is going to be very, very helpful to us in terms of our planning for facilities, and projects, and so on. So sometimes it does mean persons or personnel. And then funding. You know, how do we fund the projects that we decide are important? Certainly, one way is through the budget, the annual budget. Another way might be through a capital budget. Another way might be, as one of the projects that's listed here is this year, donations. Certainly, we get a lot of help from our, what I call, partner groups, the Hingham Ed Foundation, Hingham Sports Partnership, in helping us to fund these. And there may be other things that need to be funded other ways. And other ways might be a warrant item, or it might be a reserve fund transfer, or it might be an override, or whatever. So those are the three big questions, and I put them up front. I had them at the end of the PowerPoint, and I said, no, I'm going to put them right up front, because I think as we talk about each of these things, we need to keep them in mind. So we'll move on to going through the different categories. In the area of facilities, there are certain things that are under current consideration. That means that we've already begun them, or perhaps they're listed in our capital budget for the coming year, or they're perhaps under consideration, at least thinking about consideration, but not yet funded. But these are all things that you won't be surprised to see. There's nothing new here that should be a shock or a surprise. Obviously, the final repair for the Plymouth River roof, we're there looking at, hoping to get that done. I don't know how it's looking at the moment, John, for summer, but there are a lot of steps, as you can imagine, for any repair. And it has to do with getting the design, and then getting the project out to bid, or to get quotes, depending upon the scope of the project. And then there's the time to get it done, and how you get it done, when there are children in buildings, and so on. So that's not a new idea. That one, we anticipate, will be fully funded, because it is going to be covered by insurance, and we've already included the deductible in the category that was in the FY15 budget. And so that will get done, hopefully in a timely fashion, but it's a major project. The high school wellness and fitness room planning. And notice I put here "planning." I didn't put "design" or "construction." We all saw that project last fall, when we went on the Saturday before Thanksgiving on our annual tour of the buildings. And it's simply not an adequate or appropriate facility for kids to be working in. And so everybody has some ideas about what might be done there. We do think it's a costly project. Anything that involves possibly adding a floor, or bumping out a wall, or any of those things would be a costly project. We had originally put into the capital budget for this $50,000 to think more about the planning and into design. That figure during the budget process was cut to 25, so it's likely that that 25 is only going to cover a conceptual kind of design. What are the kinds of projects that could give us a better and more suitable space there for kids in which to work? And so, we don't know how far that 25, it's not as if the 25 represents a number that somebody gave us as to what the cost would be. But we certainly know that $25,000 will not design a space of that nature. And so we're thinking most likely conceptual design is where we might get on this. The high school kitchen and cafeteria expansion, the notion there is using what was a former dishroom, breaking that into the kitchen. It expands the kitchen area. Would have doors, so that there could be an additional line, given the number of kids that are coming to the high school, and the size of that population, the more that we can do to speed up the 22-minute period that the kids have for lunch, and speed up their being able to get food, and so on, would be a good thing. That project actually isn't even in the FY16 capital budget. It got bumped to FY17. So, you know, those are the kinds of things. Given that there isn't enough money to do all of the things that we have on our list and need, long-range planning is going to be having a challenge, taking a look at the things that need to be done, and trying to establish priorities. And can we do them all? Can we do a little of some of them? Do we have to make some sacrifices and only do certain ones? There's a lot of decision-making that's going to go here, under the left-hand side, let alone under the right-hand side on this chart. Foster Shed, you know, we did some structural work last year in the Foster Shed. It has not been painted. It does not have the enclosures that you call.
FRP panel. The FRP.
FRP panels. So those keep the water out from getting in up at the top, so those aren't done. So we have a structurally sound shed, but there is not money, at this point anyway, in this year's capital budget, to go further with that project. It would be the panels and the painting that are the most needed things there. You all saw two projects when we went to the East School Playground area, and that's the East School site from last November. One was some erosion in a bank near the end of the building where the preschool students enter. And it simply is erosion from what my perception is, of kind of a poor design for that very steep slope there, and need some work. We also saw the playground. Playground resources are very limited east, and there is a want and a need to have a more suitable play space where kids can run around and kick a soccer ball, and all those things, and have some grass that would cushion what is now kind of a dirt with a few stones area. So those two projects were put forth in the capital budget, and there's a total amount of money in there. But the total amount of money is probably enough to do one of the projects, but not both of them. And that's, again, something that long-range planning will have to talk about and prioritize. The baseball and softball fields, toward the end of the high school field project, in fact, it was, I believe, at the time that we were getting the bids for the concession building. And that project had gone out twice. Those bids came in higher than I think anyone had anticipated. So there were some things, what we called amenities, particularly for the softball and baseball fields, that were cut out of the project at their time. Things like, at that time, things like fencing, things like follow poles, things like, what else was there, covering over the dugouts. So we have two beautiful fields, and there's no doubt that people are enjoying them and using them. But those are the kinds of things that we had hoped to be able to do toward the end of the project. And in fact, once again, our partners have stepped up to the plate, and that would be Booster Groups and Sports Partnership in particular. And those things are going to get done. So that's in progress, and we do have funding to complete that, and in some creative ways, I think, as well. So, the bottom-line question, as we look at the rest of the things in the green column, is are there sufficient capital funds allocated? And I would say no, not to do everything that's here. Or other funding sources for completion of all that's needed? And that's a question we leave you with, and a lot of decision-making will need to be made around those issues. But if we look forward into the next column, which is strictly planning for the future and planning out there, here are some of the things that we need to have. And you'll notice that there are question marks, because these aren't things that have already begun, things we've talked a lot about in some cases, but they haven't been planned. There is no timeline. We haven't determined how they will be funded, but there are things that need to be done. A home for our Tracy's program is probably at the top of our list, because it's been on the list for a long, long time. Tracy's is now in Building 12 at the depot. That building is no secret, is not in very good shape. And yet, we've patched the holes in the roof, and we have a place that's adequate at the moment for our Tracy's students. But that is not going to be a long-term home, unless the town were to decide that it wants to significantly repair that building, which certainly is an option, but not something we could consider on our own. There are several things in this list that are more complicated, in that we don't totally control the things we might like to do here. It's no secret that the town has some serious spacious issues in a number of departments, recreation being one, things in this building, senior center being another. There are some folks who think the police station needs more space as well. And certainly, we're at capacity here. And so there have been a number of suggestions over the years for ways that the town could solve all of its space problems, or at least most of them, and we could be part of that solution. But that hasn't happened yet, and we don't know as much about what that process is. We need to find out more about that as we walk through the summer. But Tracy's is a big concern for us. There's been talk, has been talk about building a separate building, a modular kind of building that could be a home for that. There's been talk about using 179. And that's a building that we now do control. The cost for building 179 would be significant, because in order to put students there, and just things like workshops for our maintenance people, or storage space, the building would need to be sprinkled. So there's a big dollar outlay there. And that is one of the facilities as well, Building 179, that the town might like to take advantage of as they move forward in trying to solve their major space issues. So what is the future of those two buildings? Both of them require some repair. Certainly, Building 179 is useful to us, is important. We use it for storage now. We use it as the place out of which our maintenance folks work, and workshop there. Could be a home for Tracy's, but we have to wait a bit more to see what's going to happen with respect to the town plans. Building 12, I think, is a challenge to the town. It's a very, very large space. It'd be very costly to renovate, on the one hand. It's in kind of an environmentally sensitive area, and we have to keep that in mind. But we need to do some thinking about we, along with the rest of the town and the selectmen, about what we are going to do about those two buildings, and the town's space needs, and our piece of it, which is mainly the Tracy's program. So, a lot to be researched there, but certainly no specific plan at the moment. We've talked for the last two years at budget time, as we're looking particularly at the capital budget, at a school building authority-funded project, SOI. It's a statement of interest that we might choose to put in. Typically, that window opens up during the winter for putting in projects, and they do have a project for things like roofs and windows, and so on, for buildings that are, quote, "otherwise sound." And we've talked about that for the last couple of years, about whether or not that's something that we wanted to put on our capital list at that time, in looking particularly at window projects for Plymouth River and/or Foster School. That really feeds into looking at the next bullet item, and that is, we are sort of at the point when we might want to consider another master plan. Typically, about every 10 years or so, the school district, and not just ours, but many school districts, take a look at where they're going. Our last master plan has brought us a lot. With respect to our last master plan, we have a brand-new elementary school. We had major renovations at the Foster and Plymouth River schools. We have a brand-new middle school. So a lot was accomplished in that plan. But those projects are now accomplished, and while we might like to think that there, we're done with it all, you know, if you own a home, you're never done with it all. And so is this the time to embark on another master plan, or should that be out there for the future? You can see how that's linked with the prior bullet, because if, in fact, we were going to do another master plan, thinking particularly at our oldest facilities, then it might make you wonder about whether or not we want to think about windows, if either of those buildings were going to be considered in a master plan. I do think another master plan, and most of ours have included this, would and should require a facilities, a, excuse me, an enrollment study, a formally-done enrollment study. Those studies have given us good information in the past. The last few years would not have been a good time to do an enrollment study, because we've had a lot of fluctuation in our enrollment, particularly around the number of youngsters coming into kindergarten. It's been up and down the last three or four years. And similarly, the number of youngsters moving from grade one to, from kindergarten to grade one. And that has been a growing number. This year, we think it's going to be about 50 students. So with a full-day kindergarten, we anticipate those numbers are going to settle down a bit. And if those numbers settle down, that might give us a better basis for looking at enrollment. So that's a real question. We have to do that at some point. Is it now? Is it sooner, rather than later? Or is it later? And how does it impact those other things that are on this list? The high school wellness and fitness designing construction. So this item is in both columns. We've got a plan for it, and we're not going to get as far this year in the planning as we might have liked, at least budget-wise. But at some point, we need a formal design of that, and we need construction. We have no idea what those costs would be, because without even a conceptual design at this point, while people might have a set of ideas, I think if you asked three or four different people, then I'll tell you three or four different things that we might do, whether or not any of those things is really possible. do, whether or not any of those things is really possible is another thing, but that's a project, and that's one of the biggest space needs that exists at the high school, and our enrollment there, as you know, is growing. And then, of course, we have our new person, we have candidates, and we're going to be planning interviews for those folks, and one of the first tasks of that new role for the person who will be the facilities and procurement manager would be to do a townwide assessment, not only of our buildings, but also of a couple of buildings that Ted Alexiades has determined would be the ones to look at on the town side. So, you know, we have an idea of what that assessment might show us, but we don't really know, so it may be that there were things that will show up in that assessment that would be added to this list, or at least given a higher priority than some of the things that we already have on the list. I think the big question in this column, however, is that, the one about how these kinds of projects fit into townwide planning, and that is, even the ones that we would seem to be solely responsible for, like the Fitness Center, well, things like that have to be funded, and how do they fit into the townwide planning, not only about what's going to happen, but how those kinds of facilities will be funded. So, I want to stress again, I don't want anyone at home looking at these to say, "Oh, you've already made a list of the things that you're going to do, and what about the rest of us?" That's absolutely not the case, and that's why those have question marks, and that's why there are two question marks at the end of each one. There could be more, and that's why they're in red as well. These are questions that we're raising, things that we need to get into our thinking, but not necessarily, and definitely not anything that we've already made decisions about. I can tell you that with respect to Tracy's, this has been on our list and pushed out and pushed out for a number of years, and this has a high priority for us, and so it's here with a greater urgency, I think, than the others, but also with respect for the fact that there's a lot going on in the town side, they have a lot of big decisions to make too, so we don't want to lose sight of it, but we have begun to do other things, like explore some other spaces, other spaces that we could rent or lease that would be suitable for our Tracy's program. We need about 7,000 square feet, we need space that could be a classroom space, and what we call a workshop or a lab, and then some space for storage of things like lumber. So, because it's a fairly urgent program, and we don't have any room for it in any of our other school buildings, we've got to at least be looking for some options that we could use either while the town decision-making is going on, or as part of that decision-making. So, so those are the facilities things. Let me go through all of them, and we can come back and chat as you choose, but that's Programs, this is thinking about the program, this is thinking about teaching and learning. So, there's some things already in process. Obviously, full-day kindergarten is well-planned, we think the budget will cover it, it's going to be tight, but it covers the number that we needed to, our target that we needed to reach, but there are still some projects there. Obviously, we now need to implement the program, and that's what we're doing now, is the planning, the professional development, the buying of the things that we need to buy, the teacher planning over the summer, and curriculum changes, and all the things that need to go with a brand-new program. Long-term funding, this is funded, as you're aware, entirely this year by fees that parents pay. They're on a sliding scale, there are some children who have a reduced fee, or a waived fee, as that should be, but we really haven't talked much about what happens beyond this year, and because we start the budget in the fall, we've got to at least have some thoughts about that as we enter the budget season in the fall. Grants, we're still waiting until this year's state budget is approved to know whether or not there at least will be the quality grants given anymore, and if they're given, it would seem to be now a sense that there will be some funding for that program, but whether or not we, because of our socioeconomic status, would be eligible for that money. The other thing that is going to be changing, not for FY15, 16, but in FY17, is that there has always been the Chapter 70 money in the foundation budget, and you know there's a foundation commission that's been working all year, and they have, will have some recommendations, a couple in particular, those would not kick in in terms of changing the program until FY17, but the extent to which the formula that used to give us more money, if we moved youngsters from point-five time to full-time, would still do that or do it in the same way, so that's something else to look at, and that's why there are question marks there. We don't know about grants for FY16, and we really don't know about what the impact of formula changes for the foundation budget will be in FY17. Curriculum resources, as we speak, we're planning for pilots at the elementary level in both ELA and in math, and out of pilots typically come adoptions, and adopting for almost 2,000 youngsters, a reading program or a math program, let alone both, is a very costly endeavor, so that is going to certainly be on our horizon. Sometimes, what we have to do in adoptions, major adoptions, is spread them out over a multiple-year period, so that we don't adopt for every grade on the same year, but that is in our future, and these are resources that will bring us closer to the materials that kids need for the Massachusetts standards and the benchmarks. Another growing cost that we have is because there now are so many technology-related resources, so many online databases, so many licenses that one needs to get to use a lot of the wonderful software that's out there, sometimes things that were brought into our area of interest by foundation grants and so on, and now have become a kind of a staple of what people think they need to implement reading programs and so on, or meet individual students' needs, those things are becoming more costly. As a piece of our budget right now, they're falling under either the library budget or Joe's Technology Budget for some of the online resources that would be for a particular grade, or a whole building, or a department, and sometimes under departmental library, excuse me, departmental text and/or supply budgets, and Ellen's been working at trying to organize them so that they have their own place to be, but that's a growing cost, and as we talk about using more technology, which everybody thinks is a wonderful idea, there are things that go with that, that cost that we have to keep in mind. As well, at the elementary and social studies level, we have some new standards, new state standards in science, and so we'll be making some changes over time in both the social studies and the elementary curriculum. At the high school and the middle school, changing programs and new adoption is kind of part of doing business, but as we have larger and larger classes moving into the middle school and the high school, we simply need to buy more of everything that we now have. And one of the things that I think is the most sensitive is this last bullet, and that has to do with professional development. The funding of it certainly is costly. Finding the time to do it, to me, is almost as big a challenge as it is to find the money to do it, and so you're going to see that on our horizon as well. And so the question there is, what impact will larger classes and curriculum-related technology, sometimes available as part of an adoption, as will, I'm sure, be the case in our ELA and our math adoptions, what impact will that have on costs, and also on the need for professional development? And what impact will full-day kindergarten have on enrollment patterns? That's something I referenced earlier, in terms of whether or not there's a good time to do a new enrollment study, because we don't know what's going to happen. Does full-day kindergarten mean fewer children that will move from kindergarten to grade one, because they're already here in kindergarten? Does full-day kindergarten suggest that we might have a larger pool of folks who would be moving to town at that earlier age for their children? So, those are at least things that you shouldn't be surprised to hear, we've talked about them some, we've talked about the pilots just in the last few weeks that are going to be going on. But then, there's the whole category of planning for the future, much less known about some of these things, particularly the first one, and the reason it's in blue, of course, is it has to do with a mandate. So, is it going to be PARC, or is it going to be MCAS, or is it going to be a PARC-like test, or is it going to be something yet to be determined but not yet known? We talked at the last meeting about the fact that the Board of Ed is not going to make a decision until next November, so what would that mean in terms of the testing that needs to be planned for next spring? Technology readiness, tech support, staffing, training, folks to be ready to give the tests, and students to take the tests, and so on. And we've done a lot, we had a three-year plan to get ourselves in good shape in terms of the technology, first, looking at the infrastructure, and looking at capacity and coverage with respect to our wireless internet access in the buildings, and then buying the tools, so we've purchased Chromebooks, certainly, that came from building committee money, obviously, but through our capital budget, we have purchased carts of Chromebooks for the elementary, there'll be another set that we're coming this year, and that will get us ready, we think, from that perspective. However, I was certainly upset to hear the other day, when Liza and Cynthia were talking about going to the hearing last week, and we think we have coverage and capacity, I don't think any of us, and certainly none of the people to whom this happened, were concerned that servers would actually crash. That wasn't in our thinking at all, that we would have servers that would crash, so is that going to be an ongoing concern for us as well? So, there's a lot that has to do with the technology readiness with respect to PARC and/or MCAS. Technology in general, so we're facing the third year of a technology funding plan, and that was to give us some new technologies in the building, it was to look at some uses such as iPads in science classrooms, and certainly, the middle school one-to-one evaluation was in there, but we always knew that at the end of those initial purchases, we'd have to make some decisions, because if one-to-one is going to be an ongoing thing that we're interested in doing, then, you know, where does that cost come? Does it become part of the operating budget, or is there some sort of a lease-purchase plan that would put it there, or does it continue to be a capital budget? Those are pretty important decisions to have, and we can't have those decisions alone. Certainly, the Capital Outlay Committee and the town would have some say about what would be the best way to pursue technology. I was saying this morning to John and Ellen and Liz, you know, when I think of technology, I think we all kind of thought, well, we need to get some more stuff, and so we developed a plan to get ourselves ready, but I kind of thought, once we buy the things we need, it will be over and done. Well, you know what, with technology, that is not going to be the case. When we buy textbooks, we can use them for four years, seven years, 10 years, more years. When we buy technology, first of all, it's a question of whether it'll last that long, but more importantly, what new technology is going to be coming along? So, it's a whole new dynamic, the rate of change of technology with respect to the kinds of tools and the kinds of infrastructure, and what will wireless networks look like, and will they use radio waves or whatever might be out there? That's not a one-and-done kind of thing, and that presents, as you're aware, tremendous budget challenges for anybody moving forward. And then, talking more about the high school technology and the goals there, we have Chrome carts of Chromebooks at the high school, we are allowing, saw the new policy last week to, that will allow youngsters to use their one-to-one devices more in the building. We talked always about high school being more bring-your-own possibility for a one-to-one device. We're using other tools there now, we've got a pilot going on this year with using iPads for a math initiative, we are buying as part of our three-year plan iPads for science labs, and so there's a lot going on there, but we need to give some more attention to what is the kind of overall plan for the high school, at least as far forward as you want to look. And my gut feeling is, I don't want to look more than three years ahead with technology, but, you know, we may end up looking three years ahead, but having to live with what we have for a longer time than that. And then, there's always the possibility of changes in graduation requirements. Paula has brought up a plan to have a new requirement in terms of health and PE, there may be some others that may come along. I know not so much a change in graduation requirement, but Paula still has an ongoing interest in having her freshman orientation kind of model move through the grades, and an advisory program, if you will, that's what it's sometimes called. The administrative staff will begin looking at at least the plan for developing a successor, strategic plan to the one that we have now and will be expiring this year. So, I guess the biggest questions in that category really have to do with technology, what emerging instructional tools, wireless, I guess, servers, I should have added here, but I worked on this before we got that bad word last week, and other challenges should we be preparing for. Program and student support services, now I mentioned that many of you would think student support is really all about special education, and that clearly occupies a big piece of our budget, but that's not all we're talking about here. So, the things that are in process, the social-emotional support services and physical health, and Ellen, I need the lights on. I can think of no area that requires more of us today, in 2015, than support for challenging social and emotional issues, physical and mental health issues, serious family dynamics and issues. There is not a single area of student support that requires more of that from us right now, and it does impact our budget already, and I believe it will impact our budget even more in the future, sad to say. I gave you in your packet tonight, and I said this was confidential, there certainly are not memes in it, but just mentioning some of the numbers. This is the monthly report, happens to be the last report of the month for the Transition Room, and this is what, our third year of the Transition Room, I think, Ellen? And we've kind of upped the ante each year with going from a part-time parent position to a more full-time parent position, and then to a tutor role. But just for the summary, the Transition Program at the high school, 52 different students accessed this this year. When that program first came in, we were thinking of numbers like six to 10, children who perhaps had been hospitalized and weren't ready to return to their full program. 52 students used that program this year, 44 last year, so it's up. Seven used the Transition Room this month, and eight used it at the same time last year. 35 students accessed this service for physical health. We hadn't kind of thought very much about physical health issues, physical health issues, that could be a concussion, and in fact, there were 23 concussions. Now, not all of those happened as part of our athletic program, fortunately, because it's terrible that children would have concussions from anything, but some of them came from accidents at home, from skiing, for other kinds of occurrences beyond just athletic programs in high school. But 23 students, 15 students used the program for mental health reasons, and those are things like depression, and anxiety, and school avoidance, which, you know, isn't just happening at the high school, it's happening at the middle school and also at the elementary level, sad to say. Nine students out of the 52 were on an IEP. Four had a 504 plan, but 75% of them had no specialized special education learning plan or goal. These were all things that had to do with their physical health, their mental health, their social-emotional health. So, you have the chart there as to how many students were in the room during a particular part of the year, and which ones came back, and how many were able to return to classes, and how long it took, but quite frankly, I cannot imagine how we would have been able to function in the high school without this place for these children, more importantly, how the children would have been able to function. You remember, one of the things that we said when we put this program out there was something we wanted to try, and initially, it was funded in the first year by the foundation, and we explored some other communities that had the program, and one of the things that we said is, that one of the ways this program would benefit us is that, at that time, children who weren't able to stay in their classes because of some of these issues, sometimes would simply come and sit in the guidance office, or they'd come and they'd sit in the nurse's office, they would go to the assistant principal's office just for this respite that they needed from their regular routine of learning. So, we do think- So we do think, just from that perspective, that, that this has helped tremendously in having these youngsters not be in a guidance office all day and using those resources in a way that was not as productive as it, as it might have been. So I, this report just happened to come along the other day and I put it in here because the middle school is concerned about the same issue. And given that we're going to have more than 1,100 students in that middle school next year, the youngsters are there, their issues are there. The resources that we need, whether that be some additional counseling time or a space like this, has already been put forward as a need that they have. So when I say special ed isn't our biggest support, student support need at the moment, it's not. It's not. This is, and it's true at law levels. It's part of the rationale that we gave last year when we asked for the adjustment counselors to be restored to the budget so that all of our elementary schools have full-time adjustment counselors. It certainly helps, but it is not all that we need. So in addition, you heard us say in this budget that we really need two people, two nurses, RNs, in both of our high, for the high school and our middle school health office. We have those this year. We're benefiting tremendously because two of them are hired as full-time staff members by us and the other two, who are RNs, are working as par educators. And we're very fortunate to have them there, but at some point benefiting from that kind of expertise for the par educator rate is likely not to be possible. So the whole physical health thing. ELL training. Now, we have Ellen four or five ELL youngsters?
I'd say five.
Five. So there's five children for whom English is, is not their first language and who need support in that area. But you know what? It doesn't mean it matter if you have five, or you have 25, or you have 200, or you have 50% of your population. It doesn't matter. The requirements are the same for all of us. And so this is another one of those mandate things. The biggest issue for us at the moment is being sure that staff is trained. So if a child with English language learning needs appears in one of our buildings and needs to be at the middle school and has five academic area teachers, guess what? Those teachers all have to be trained immediately, not by their choice. So I'm sure that not all teachers will be happy to hear that, but we don't have a choice about that. And, and it's a bigger issue, of course, at the middle and the high school because those children have multiply, multiple core teachers. We do have a number of folks trained. This is the last year coming up that the state is going to be paying for the training. So this is sort of typical as to what has happened here in the past, that things are initially funded by the state and then the funding goes away. So the need will still be here, and it's not a huge need for us because of the numbers we have, but it is one of those things that's immediate and it's unpredictable and, and we're going to have to be thinking of making sure that we have an adequate budget for that training. SEI, sheltered English immersion training, that is required. And it's also required, not just if you have a child who appears in your classroom, but also as part of the license, licensure process as people are moving forward, either new folks coming along or people moving forward to re-certify are going to need that. We've talked a lot about the post-secondary planning center and what a wonderful resource that has been. The only problem with that resource is the resource is there, we've had good service, but we've had three people in three years because that is paid as a tutor rate, per diem kind of rate. And if we want to get folks that'll come along and staff that and will become more the fabric of our building and be part of our team in an ongoing way, we have to think about how we would then compensate those folks. They, all three of the folks we've had have been licensed counselors. They've been wonderful in terms of doing things that, that help kids get ready, use Naviance and get ready for their application process and so on. So invaluable, but can we afford to keep them and have any consistency at the rate that we now pay? Middle school language lab. So we have a middle school language lab. We have a high school language lab. That lab has nearly a full-time person. Right now, we're sharing some of those hours, we added hours this year because we need the same kind of support at the middle school. Perhaps not exactly the same kind of support. That language lab software is not quite as sophisticated as the high school software and as, because it's appropriate to middle-aged children, but, but we need some additional help there. So those are the things that you all have heard about and that you know about. Some additional needs, I've talked about the first two of them, middle school transition room and additional middle school counseling. Could it be one or the other? Could it be a combination of those things? Sure, we haven't made any, any budget requests at this point, but certainly things in that area to support that need are very much in our thinking. This year, we need at the last minute, I would say, a grades three to five substantially separate classroom for a very small number of children with significant needs. These are children we've been able to keep in our district instead of going out of the district. And it was the one kind of hole in our substantially separate classroom set of cohorts. We have at the, an intensive preschool. So at that level, we have resources for children with really serious needs. And then the K to two cohort at each school. We've had a, what we've called an intensive kindergarten, but it's really a cohort of kids in the grade K to two range, so we've had that in place. We have two programs at the high school and had those a number of years, very successful at allowing those young people to stay in their, in their town and go to school and, and spend four to six years at our high school and have done very well. We have a cohort at the middle school as well. There's always been that group in the grades three through five range. And we tried to get a program like that going a number of years ago. It was back when Jeanne Lab was here and we thought we were all ready to go and one by one, there were four or five students and one moved away, actually, two moved away and one went to a, a different program. And so that didn't happen that year. Well, we need the program this year and we can fund it out of IDEA money for this year, but then we have to think about it becoming the part of the fabric of that program that we, that we offer as we move, as we move forward. So of all of those things there, addressing students' social, emotional and mental health and physical health needs and supporting family issues consume increasing district resources. And that includes new roles, people, and it includes staff time and energy and focus at all levels. As you can imagine, most of these problems are not easily solved. Not as easily as a recovery from a concussion would be, not as easily as an appendectomy would be successful, not as easily as a broken bone can be solved. These are often longstanding issues and we need support. And I guess, you know, you could say, well, why is that our responsibility? And you all, you know what my answer is always about that. I can't worry about why it's our responsibility as opposed to someone else's. I can just worry about kids who show up on our door and families who have needs and that's our responsibility to do what we can for those things, just that it's becoming a bigger part of our job and, and it will be a lot of, in a lot of the thinking and planning that we do as we move forward, particularly around budget. So this last category, and I said in the beginning that, of course, we, some of these things could be in more than one category, so personnel and staffing. So I've divided this into district-wide needs that aren't really specific, and that means that we really haven't spelled out what the solution is here, but what the problem is that we have to work together to, to solve. So a number of these things are around district-wide things and, and in particular here at central office. Student services, there's no question, we need a second special education administrator. And it could be in a variety of forms. It could be, some, some districts have a secondary coordinator, an elementary coordinator, secondary, that could be a model. It could be that you have a department head and the overall director. But there simply isn't enough time in the day or the night or on weekends to manage the expectations around communication and doing the tasks for the 600 students that have an IEP. I, I think, I won't ask Liz and put her on the spot as to what percentage of those she sees regularly, but it doesn't take many if you're in a mediation that lasts a whole day. 600 students, even the smallest percentage in terms of dealing with messages and emails and phone calls and meetings for individual children. Now, are those services and, and meetings and so on important? Yes, they are. But we have exhausted our ability to manage them with the level of staffing that we, that we have. Terms of central office administration, moving forward, it may be that this district and the school committee will want to consider whether or not there's another role that we should have a central office, something like a personnel director or a human resources officer. We don't have those things. So when we talk personnel and human resources, it's a piece of John in terms of the support services. It's a piece of Ellen and me. It's a piece of Michaela. And, and we think we do a pretty good job of making all that happen, but, but it's hard to get it all done in the time that, that we have. You know that we tried last year when we lost both our payroll person and our accountant to reorganize that whole function a bit and, and, you know, we're going to see some good benefits out of that. But there has been a process where we've changed percentages of people and percentages of roles. And we have to think in terms of, you know, the degree to which we're compensating them appropriately and what that will need to look like over time. Technology support. I think I could ask five of you over there, what five things would you think is the most important thing here? And you might all have a different idea. Some of them are things that can be combined, obviously, and I'm not going to talk to all of you to make those decisions, but website and other communication tools that we, we know about. You know, we once thought, wow, once we have a website, boy, everybody will know everything they need to know. Well, then, no, it's not so much a website, we need to send out email messages. And now we're knowing that we need to send out tweets and we need to send things on the phone and all of that. So that whole area of communications is a big one. We, we think we can get a lot of bang for the buck with our student technology helpers. Certainly, they were helpful last year in terms of getting computers set up for teachers at the beginning of the year and some training functions. We used some student tech helpers this spring and getting the Chromebooks ready to be distributed. We had to get 388 Chromebooks out the door and every one of them and opening a box like that, configuring what needed to be configuring, putting directions in it, packaging the book, box back up and then distributing those in a couple of days. And this spring, this summer in late August, we're going to have to distribute over 1,100 of those and go through the same steps. So we use student support there. We do have some student tech hours in the budget this year to help us with some of those more routine tasks. And then always the issue of technology integration specialist help, whether that's in the form of a person or multiple people or part-time people or whatever. So those are some of the, the functions in terms of technology support. Our transition planning, we've talked about this a number of times and coming to no particular conclusions, but it's no secret that our senior administration, our senior administration consists of the four of us and the principals, six principals. And we also have directors, of course, that we think are senior administration. And there's going to be a turnover there. You only have to look at us and, and know that. And so does that mean anything in terms of a cost or does it only mean something in terms of a process? It's a combination of all of those kinds of things, but something more that we have to keep on our mind. Facilities and procurement manager, I call that a district-wide kind of function, so that hiring is in process. We made that a priority to be the first thing to get done, although we had an unfortunate, not unfortunate, but we had an unanticipated retirement from this office or resignation from this office just a month or so ago. So that's a high priority as well because we're having a hard time holding people in their seats in this office. So we need to do that job as well. But anyway, that's, that's going to happen. We removed the maintenance request that we had at the end of the budget process, so we still are looking to restore the maintenance, maintenance person that we lost back in '09, '10. And that role is important, particularly as we look at our, our added resources and particularly as we look at the fields and the need for some help at the middle school and high school fields as well. And then, of course, there's always the enrollment-related staffing. And right now, that need is going to be greatest at the high school and the middle school because that's where those large numbers are, are going to be moving. So these two questions are more, I think, philosophical questions than they are practical ones. And they both really relate to the same kind of thing. They both relate to expectations and community expectations and especially this community's expectations. So the two questions, how can we find an appropriate balance between adding staff and reducing workload expectations, especially here? So it's not all about, let's just get some more people. It really has to be about modifying some of the expectations. And so that's a question to think about and can we be creative about engaging the community in that kind of discussion? How can we all help so that we can get more of what we want and need for, for our kids? So that's one question. The other question is, how can we provide effective communications in a cost-effective and doable manner? Certainly, the community outreach committee is looking at some ideas for different ways to communicate and better ways to communicate. But in the end, it's the same kind of a question, and that is, what proportion of the time that we have, and how do we balance the proportion that we need to provide services for, for kids and the proportion that we need to provide the communications that, that parents want and expect here? And we've got to find, we've got to find that balance. I don't think it's impossible, but I think we have to think about it and work at it. So those are the four categories. So part of the planning, when we meet in September, on September 13th, on, at Sunday morning, will be about setting some goals and coming to some consensus, some big ideas and thinking about how we will best spend the money that we already have allocated, but also thinking ahead to the FY '17 budget because that starts shortly after September 13th, as a matter of fact. So these are just some things, and I could have put a lot more boxes here, but I was going, running out of space and, and the numbers were getting, the print was getting smaller, so I didn't put them all in. But these are some things that, that you need to keep in mind as we move forward. One is, you know, we have a big ticket item next year in the bus bid. We kind of kicked the can down the road, was the right thing to do to get us where we needed to be for this year, and we have safe transportation for another year. But that bus bid is out there and very likely, we'll learn particularly from this year of having a kindergarten class in on both ends of the run, whether we need an additional bus. So we can't forget about that as we go into the budget. You know, it's natural to say, oh, let's make the list of all the things we want. Well, I'm thinking, let's make the list of all the things we have to keep in the back of my mind, of our mind, that we already have got on our plate. So that's one of them. High school accreditation. High school is going to be moving forward with their decennial every 10 years is an accreditation team that comes. This year, they'll be doing the self-study. And then there'll be a team coming in FY '17. And when a team comes, there's about a $5,000 cost to the association just for the materials and getting ready for the visit. But then we have a team of 13, 14, 15 people who come to town, they come on a Sunday and they leave on Wednesday. And we are responsible for housing them and providing them with food and whatever else they may, they may need. We don't know the cost of that because that whole process is changing somewhat for public secondary schools. There's been a study underway for several years now. So, you know, the cost could be different. It could be less, as a matter of fact, or more because that's one of the things the committee looking at change was charged with doing. So we don't know what that figure will be, but it needs to be in next year's budget to be ready for us in '16, '17. We're going to have this facility analysis. I would be surprised if we do an analysis and just use it as an assessment list, well, here are the things we need to do, without thinking that at least some of those things need to be on the list of things that we need. We will have reduced circuit breaker funding. Now, this is a good news, bad news story. Small number of dollars, but it's a smaller number of dollars because fewer kids are in out-of-district placement. That's a good thing, but it does have an impact on us. I think Liz told me today that July 7th, that's the date by which we have to submit our, our requests for funding reimbursement for the year that has just completed. So as the summer moves on, we'll know a little bit more about exactly what that hit will be and what impact that would have because that's an offset to our budget. And it's a big offset in the sense that it offsets our biggest account in special education, which is the tuition. which is the tuition account. I mentioned earlier, changes coming to the state budget formula. We'll know more about the specifics of what those will be. There's also a new change that we just heard about a month or so ago, and that's a new way of calculating how low-income students will be determined. Up until now, it's always been that we would use things like the free and reduced lunch list. There's now going to be a whole new formula for how that would be calculated and how that will change our thinking, we don't know. We've heard from the town side of decline in new growth revenues and that that's not a one-year problem. That's going to be in front of us for the foreseeable future, so we have to keep that in the back of our thinking. We need full funding for our personnel costs. There's no question that we have to look at that as a primary piece of the budget. And yes, it's important to look for new initiatives and it's important to listen to the directors and the principals to know what they think they need, but we've got to start with a budget that fully funds our personnel costs, and that includes steps and lanes and what other contractual increases we have agreed to. And then, of course, there's a big question, and you see three question marks there again because no decisions have been made about that, about what are we going to do about full day kindergarten? Are we going to hope that the town will be able to pay for at least some of that or all of it or none of it? Those are unanswered questions. So as I said, there are a lot of other things we could have added in there, but those are just some of them that it's important to keep in the backs of our mind as we move forward. So, I need a drink of water. I'm running out of breath. So anyway, those are my thoughts, and it's not an all-inclusive list. Every one of you could add other things, but I think the important thing is to begin thinking about what we have on our plate so that when we come to that very brief four hours on that Sunday morning, we can make the best decisions with the best knowledge we have of the resources that will be likely available to us. And as good a time as any to keep thinking about this, and we can update this list as we move on, maybe take some things off, that would be nice, add some things on, and certainly a number of the things here will be the subject of discussions at particularly community outreach and long-range planning, especially for the money projects that we have on our plate right at the moment. So thank you for your attention.
So Dr. Gallo, after you get your water.
Yeah.
Do you want to take some questions?
Sure.
Okay, so drink your water first. Liza, do you want to go first?
Thank you. It is daunting seeing it all. I just had a couple.
Can I just say that I don't want it to sound negative because, you know, we have these same kinds of discussions, we have these same kinds of things on our list every year. So I don't want it to sound like, oh, my God, you know, the roof is falling in. The roof's not falling in. We're going to have a good year next year, we'll have a good year the year after that and the year after that. But I think we can perhaps do things in a better way in terms of planning if we think about them more.
Yeah, I just had some questions so that I can understand the planning process better. So back on the facilities master plan and the enrollment study. What is it, can you describe what is needed for each of those as in staff? Do we do an ad hoc committee, timing, costs?
Yeah, well, it really depends upon, you can have a study of any kind of scope and magnitude. In the past, we've typically asked for an amount of money, you know, to have, if we were focusing particularly on serious look at facilities, to be able to hire some expertise, perhaps the person we are hiring now could be in that kind of role. And so maybe that could be, that piece of it could be taken care of. Typically, we've had some sort of a committee that includes community representation. We did a master plan. We used, happened to use an architect because we knew that we were going to have some big issues for space needs and that kind of thing. We'd done our own internal assessment. Typically, there is some sort of an enrollment study. Now, we can do a pretty decent enrollment study. We now know the technologies, but there are firms that are out there and do that and know all the right questions to answer. You will remember, you and Andy were on the, we had the original committee that came up with the master plan, and then we got a piece of it done, and then we needed to go back and look another, take another look at that. And so the two of you were on that committee, and that was an appointed ad hoc kind of committee that really looked again at the enrollment study. And so could you do something like that in a couple phases? Yeah, you could. So scope is really as great as or as little as you want it to be. But it is a major task to get the kind of a thing done because while you may involve outside people like engineers or architects, or you may involve someone to do the study, it still requires all of you and all of us to have a role, and so not the kind of thing you want to do in a year when you have multiple things on your plate.
Right. Okay, those were my, the two things that I wanted to get a little more sense about, otherwise pass on to others.
Do you have any questions, Aileen? Ray?
Just a comment on the facilities master plan. When we started talking about the concept in planning session, we talked about perhaps renewing the master plan and following kind of the same procedure that we followed in the past with the group and the architect. But then we started talking about this position, facilities manager, and how perhaps that person could come in and under the umbrella of that role, this could be something, or at least a piece of it, could be handled. Certainly, the enrollment study you'd need to farm out or do in a different way.
And you know, when we talk about a master plan, we had issues all over the place originally because of growth and enrollment, and it wasn't clear in our original planning, are we talking about a new building? Are we talking about a different grade structure and so on? This kind of a master plan for where we are now could have a much narrower scope. Maybe we would want to say, let's look at our older buildings because our other buildings are in pretty good shape. So the scope of it could be different.
Yeah, it seems, you know, when we last talked about this in planning, it seems like when we kind of moved the discussion towards getting a facilities manager and then doing that inventory.
Mm-hmm.
And then we started to talk about it in the town context that, once we got that inventory, then we could identify things that maybe we needed to pursue, and then that could lead into step B.
Exactly. Yep. But there is, there's good timing, first of all, it's about 10 years. Secondly, we've got the facilities person. Thirdly, we think our enrollment pattern will hopefully settle down, is another thing. And fourthly, a lot of our buildings are in good shape, and so in fact, we might have a much narrower scope.
Thank you, it's very comprehensive.
Dr. Shire?
Dr. Gallo, just focusing on the facility, you emphasized the east playground and the erosion. Erosion, I'm familiar with. When you say these playgrounds, you're referring to the field?
We're talking about the field, the playfield, yes. And the plan that we had was, it's a very simple one, and that was to put down some loam and seed it and have a safer and more comfortable playing space. John has taken one other step, and that is, we need to look at that wetlands area nearby, and so we want to be sure that whatever we would do would be in keeping with what the guidelines are there. So we need to look at that aspect of it.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Thank you. There's a lot to think about. One minor point, when the accreditation committee comes in, that's next.
It's not this coming year. That's a self-study. But they would be coming in, I think Paula had said '17, so whether it be the spring or fall of '17. But most likely, if it's the spring of '17, that's the '16, '17 year, and so the budget would have to come next fall.
Is the school committee involved in that at all?
We kind of involved them the last time around. We kept you involved with all of the steps. Certainly, there would be a point at which they give a report. There's a point at which we get input with respect to some of the questions. I'm hedging a bit because the process is changing. It is in the midst of some change. There are some new standards. There are also going to be some new protocols. There are a number of communities that ask for changes to be made because the process is a challenging one, particularly when we serve other masters like DESE, and the process is a costly and challenging one from a number of perspectives. So I don't know all of the steps, but there's not a formal way, and that's why I say we involved the school committee last time. We gave you little quizzes along the way so you got to know what the standards were and tried to give you information that you would know enough about what we were doing. But it is a building accreditation as opposed to a district one.
The school council discussed it at times this year, and I think Paula plans to have the school council participate in the self-study.
And it could be, it's a good point, Ray, because there could be members of the school committee, members of the administration, parents that will be involved on some of the subcommittees that exist during the self-study. So that often is the case. There's also a time on the very first day, excuse me, when the school committee would be invited to come and answer questions that the visiting team might have.
Dr. Gallo, thank you very much. You used the word daunting task, and it is daunting because I don't think a lot of times, we talked about this many times, I don't think people realize how big the Hingham Public School System is. Forty-five hundred students, 10 buildings, 600 employees, 15% on some sort of either 504 plan. So it is a lot challenging, especially as the world continues to change as quickly. But I think this is a very good overview for us to start thinking about over the summer and get ready for all the challenges and opportunities and successes we'll have. Are there any questions from the audience? Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Gallo.
Thank you.
And you can have more water now. All right. Item 5.5, to receive notification of an appointment of a math teacher, a phys ed teacher, and an elementary reading specialist at South School, or an elementary reading specialist, effective August 31st. Is there anything special we need to know about that, Dr. Gallo?
One of those names that we could use. The young man who's coming back to work with us is a phys ed teacher who worked with us a couple of years ago, and everybody is in place about that.
Kristy Swanson is Rick's wife.
That is true. Chris, Kristy Swanson is going to be the new readings specialist at South Elementary School with a retirement. And Chrissy Swanson was one of many people who applied and has used us as a mentor.
Wonderful. Okay, 48 hours. So Carol, we did push off the Glenn Kuter training just to make sure you were here when you walked in.
Thank you.
So here, listen, we do subscribe to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. We pay a fee there. Dr. Gallo talks a lot about professional development for the teachers, and they all always have to get PDPs, professional development points. I know many of us in our professional lives, we all have some sort of continued education, and we haven't had the formal, or we haven't had the training coming here to Hingham in two years. Dr. Gallo and I spoke, and I think there is a lot of merits of the program, but it's not something that we either want to do it or we don't want to do it. And so that's what I think we need to address. You know, I do think there's a lot of good merits to it. It's very difficult to find a time. We're very lucky to have Glenn wanting to come here. Maybe he could get one of his top lieutenants to help us, but that's where I stand. I don't know, Liza, if you had anything that you want to add to that before we open it up?
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile for us to regroup and see if we can find a date that all of us can make it. I think it would be helpful for us to just revisit general practices of how school committees operate. And he goes over laws, and especially it'd be helpful for Aileen and Cynthia. But, you know, it's a challenge for all of us to find dates and then let alone working off of Glenn's schedule. So, you know, when I realized we were having a hard time coming up with a date, I did look at the MASC website, and they have a new program called District Governance that one of the field reps would come. So it's like a refresher course of charting the course. So if we can get Glenn to, or somebody to do the charting the course so that Cynthia and Aileen can be certified, that's great. If we can't find a good date for that with the right person from MASC, then maybe we can just do a smaller version with another representative. So that's where I was thinking of, if we can even just find a date for all of us that would work, and then we could go back to MASC and see who's available to come and work with us.
I think we've several dates where six people could make it, and I mean, I thought that was a pretty good ratio in terms of trying to get a majority. I think the summer is difficult, you know? I mean, I know my plans are in flux, so there are certain dates I can do, and I put those down, and I don't know. I'm not sure we're going to find what we need for the summertime if we're trying to get seven people to be there. And, you know, in my estimation, the two important people to be there obviously are our two newest members. I just.
Well, maybe that's one thing, maybe we should ask Glenn, if not Glenn, another person, we'll go back and revisit the calendar for six people. Did you have any other comments on that, Dr. Gallo?
No. You know, the thought of using the 20th presumed then we would still have to have another meeting, but maybe we could meet at a different night that Glenn couldn't have met. We didn't explore those. He gave us first three dates and he gave us 10 dates, but certainly there were other dates. So that was the thinking behind looking at the 20th. But, you know, that presumed, that assumed that people could be here early and not everybody can. So, and there were more people that couldn't be here then than there were that couldn't be here on some of the other dates. So, you know, is it, I guess what we need to know, is it two or seven and nothing in between? Or as Carol says, is six better than two? Those are decisions you've got to make and.
Okay. So we are on for 7:00 PM, July 20th, for our regular school committee meeting.
Yes, we are.
We will be using our.
Was that the 7:31 or the 7? I know when was 7:30.
That's the 7 o'clock one. The 7:31 is August 17th, I think, yeah. That's how we said it originally.
We'll be using our new electronic devices, so please bring them or use them or refer to them. And we will, Dr. Gallo and I will again regroup and try to see what we can do with MASC and come up to some, you know, workable solution. Does anyone have any other questions on that?
So after you talk about that, then you'll circulate it around to us so we can make a group decision about it.
On the dates.
I mean, obviously, we need to make some sort of group decision because we want as many people as possible.
So in my mind, I would agree that if we're going to go this route with having Glenn or somebody from MASC come and do the course for Aileen and Cynthia, that would be great. Then plan to do it for Aileen and Cynthia, and to the extent that others want to participate and can participate, then you get the largest group possible. If it's not possible to get all seven, then, you know, I don't think that you keep holding out for that. The alternative is they go to a charting the course when it's available.
No, I mean, we'll try. We will try to do that. Obviously, when you listen to Glenn, which we have in the past, he really tries to lay out things what's best for school committees and districts and getting things accomplished. And as Dr. Gallo listed up there, there's so many things that we need to do. So of course, we're going to try to, it's unfortunate that we had a lot of dates, but we didn't get everyone, so we'll go back and revisit. So moving on, is there, Dr. Gallo, oh, subcommittee reports, subcommittee and project reports. Does anybody have any updates? Cynthia, I'll start down with you.
An update from us.
All right. Dr. Shire?
So we are meeting salary negotiation on July 13th at 9:00 AM to continue our review of section 23 and 24 of the proposed new 23 and 24 for the educator evaluation handbook.
Wonderful. Ray? Liza?
Policy, we're meeting on June 29th. Follow-up on section three and a couple other mandated items that we talked about last week.
Did we decide three or four, Liza?
Four.
Four, okay.
And we'll need to post that by Thursday, so we can talk about the agenda.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'd like to say that we will take a motion for adjournment at 9:00 PM.
We're moved.
Okay.
Second?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Have a great 4th of July.